Berks, and this is the Clarkston City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. At this time, I'll do roll call, starting with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Addie.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Councilwoman Perkins just stepped out, and I'd recognize our city manager, Shaquilla Miller-Thornton.
Thank you.
And at this time...
One more to go.
Oh, okay. And coming to Zoom near us, Councilwoman Carroll.
Present.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have a motion.
Yes.
I want to move 6I and defer it to the end of November, I don't know the date, work session.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we defer item 6I to the November work session. Any other changes? And we just deferred 6I. All in favor, say aye.
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 Councilwoman Carroll?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you. We'll move to public comments, starting with, any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted before public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes, and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing, and this will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for a public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. We'll start with presentations under four, and that would be 4A to discuss a proclamation designating November as Native American Heritage Month by Ms. Yolanda McGee. And she'll walk in in a second.
My apologies. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. So this month, we're in for a treat. It is the National Native American Heritage Month. It is celebrated each November to recognize rich cultures, traditions, and contributions of Native Americans and Alaskan Native communities, and to acknowledge their significant history and ongoing efforts to address challenges. The observance initially declared in 1990 by President George H.W. Bush has become an annual tradition for governments, organizations, and the public to share, celebrate the heritage of the Nation Indigenous People. The theme for the 2025 is "Weaving Together Our Past, Present, and Future." This theme used by the Bureau of Indian Affairs for its November celebration emphasized the connection between historical injustices, such as the federal Indian boarding schools, and ongoing work to address the resulting integrational trauma. The official color for Native American Heritage Month is red, to symbolize the loss of life, connect to the sacredness of blood and ancestors, and call for attention to violence against Indigenous people. Red also holds broader cultural significance, representing life, power, strength, and the connection to the earth in various Native American cultures.
Okay. Are there any comments? Can this be consent? Consent, everybody? Consent? No? Yeah, okay. I can't still...
Yeah, so do you have a question on it? So again, so where, do we have a group that brought this to us? I mean, I appreciate the focus on diversity, but I want to make sure that we're not just bringing proclamations without there being a partnership behind it. And so we've got about four proclamations that come on the agenda, it seems like every month. I know this has been a thing in the past. And as well, I also want to make sure that there's programming, there's something tangible that connects it to the community that's just a part of it. Because we all know, it's just us saying stuff, but if it's not connected to policy change, or removing barriers, or, you know, an exhibit, or something like that, I want to make sure that there's some substance to it, so.
The other piece is, you can have a proclamation that does not have to be programmatic either. And that's a good point that you brought up, but I also want to make sure that one of the things from the DEI office, and she is making sure in terms of the different recognitions, you can do that. So that's a choice that we have as a council, whether we can do things in terms of just programmatic and/or, because again, a proclamation is something where you recognize something. And that's all we're really doing. You have the option, and we do have the option, of making sure from a programmatic piece that we're doing that as well, but we're not limited to that.
I understand that. So is this, is this your agenda item?
No, I didn't even put it on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I understand it's coming from, I'm just trying to figure out. Because I was looking for an answer from...
Well, I gave you an answer too, and she can follow up, Ms. McGee.
So what happened before I present any proclamation? I'll reach out to their national office and see if this is something that they are engaged in. When I did my reach out, I explained to them what the city of Clarkston is, our diversity, and they were okay with it.
Okay, gotcha. Did they have any suggestions in terms of beyond? And I guess my concern is if we start layering too many things, again, even with the proclamation, that's your point, I think it's one thing if we're honoring an individual, but recognizing such a dark piece of our history in a way that celebrates things that were lost, that acknowledges the pain, you know, everything else, seems like we could be doing more there. So I guess that's where my question is.
Well, based on them, because I received the theme for the year as well as the color.
Okay.
And based on how they explained it, they expect the theme to carry it out because it acknowledges it. The color to also carry it out because it also acknowledges it.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Yes.
I'd just like to add that because we're likely sitting on land that was occupied by the Cherokee, who were forcibly removed from this part of the world, I think it's totally appropriate that we acknowledge that annually. Thank you for it.
Acknowledging stolen land?
I'm sorry?
You said acknowledging stolen land.
She just made a comment about why she thought it was a good idea.
Yep.
That's it?
We should remember who occupied this land first.
So if you want to get more into detail, there's a wonderful book, The Grapes of Wrath, and it explains the Trail of Tears and how all of that came about, so that would be a good, great, great book to read.
I want to clarify, I'm not pushing back on the idea of remembrance. I just want our remembrance to be substantive. And I'm not saying this isn't, you know, doesn't lack any substance, period, but if we're talking about the Trail of Tears, if we're talking about, if Clarkston does have a history connected to the Cherokee, then I guess what I'm saying is, it'd be interesting, I would like to see a little more connection from the city's narrative to that point. You know, where are, do we have historic settlements? Do we know where they are? Do we know where they're located? And so if we're bringing proclamations, and this isn't, you know, kind of, this is just the first one that came up, so I think I'm kind of looking at this in proclamations in general, not specifically this one, but are we connecting it, you know, in a more tangible way to that history? Because we've got, you know, 4D, again, we've got multiple these that come up every month, and so if it's that important, you know, if it's something we do want to remember, which sounds like we're in agreement, that's what it is, let's build a stronger narrative than just bullets on, you know, having this mixed in with 14 other different things every month. So that's my point, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
The only thing I'll add to that, if it's appropriate, is that the proclamation actually says to educate the public about various tribes and also celebrate their significant contribution. So I think Councilwoman Perkins is correct. This wasn't brought to us, so we couldn't have a programmatic output of it, or illustrate how we're going to measure impact, or even evaluate the emphasis of visibility on these special days. But I do think that as a city, if we're saying that we're celebrating something, or educating people on it, written in a draft of the proclamation, I think that that's something that is a great deliverable or outcome that we should achieve for.
So, City Manager, maybe one of the things that we could do is if we have somewhere on the website that we can link the proclamation to some of the information that we have within the proclamation to kind of talk about the why. Would that take care of everything? Yes, Vice Mayor.
My question is for the city manager. We were doing this previously, and it caused this type of confusion. And as the DEI person at that time, she had a question. She wanted to know, how are we selecting the proclamations? So she took on that responsibility. Is this a internal function of you guys? Or is it, I know it comes before us for the signatures and everything, but I don't see why we are having this discussion. So I'm trying to see if, from a DEI perspective, I see why she does what she does, because everybody's being recognized in one form or fashion. But it's a function coming out of your office. Is there a problem with the way this is being presented to us, or would you like to expand on that? Or, I don't, I don't see what the confusion is, but yeah.
I think from an AD and our office perspective, I think is very much in line with the function of the job. I think this is also twofold. I think, once again, just kind of circle back to Councilwoman Perkins' point, when we, when we, whatever we proclaim that has a expectate, that puts an expectation on the city, if we proclaim it by official action of the council, then we need to follow through on that expectation. So I don't know if it's, if it's where we should limit the language of the proclamation to acknowledgement only, right, being careful not to set an expectation that we will have to follow up with some action. I mean, that might, that might be a way to go.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. So from moving forward, I think that would be a better response, so then that might address some of the other issues. Is it some, something else? Yes?
I think remembrance. I think remembrance is a part of that, and that, I think, supports the action of acknowledging that this is a national day.
Okay, all right. So is this for consent, or we have to vote on this?
Can I make one more point, Mayor?
Yes.
Before you call, call for consent? I think if it, if it is the desire of the council as a collective or as a consensus to have a programmatic approach to the proclamations that we bring, I think collectively, we would need to hear that from you all, so that we know what that expectation is, right? So we can set the operational kind of guide or directive for proclamations, right? But if it's something programmatic that might require, you know, additional staff time, some funding, some form of event or communications around that, right, then we need to, that needs to come from the dads.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, again, is this consent or not consent? Consent? Consent. Councilwoman Perkins? Consent or no? Councilwoman Bell?
No.
Okay. That'll take care of that, and we'll move forward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And this will be an agenda item. And we'll move to the next one, which would be B, and that is to discuss a proclamation designating October as National Code Compliance Month. Mr. Edwards?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So on this one, our code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens living in the communities throughout the United States through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, environmental, property maintenance, and other local codes and ordinance. The city of Clarkston recognizes that code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who are committed to improving life safety and enhancing neighborhood aesthetic through their daily work. These professionals play a vital role in maintaining the beauty, functionality, and integrity of Clarkston's neighborhoods, helping to ensure that homes, businesses, and public spaces remain safe, clean, and welcoming for all residents. Code enforcement offers positively impact property values, community image, and quality of life while shaping public understanding of municipal government and the shared responsibility of maintaining our community standards. And October has been nationally designated as National Code Compliance Month, providing an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the vital contribution of code enforcement officers to the health and safety, sustainability of our community. And on this one, our code enforcement officers are at the American Association of Code Enforcement Officers in St. Louis right now. So we would ask that we move this to the next meeting, so we could present them with certificates, just recognize them for all the work they do.
Okay. So are they going to be back next week?
They will be. They'll be back this week.
So we can leave it on, and then just give them the certificates and everything next week, if that works?
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah, just not consent.
Right. Oh, no. Okay. Any questions about this one?
Are there any obligations for the city?
No, we will print out certificates and have them in frames that we've already purchased.
And we're going to acknowledge them on our website, right?
Yes, we're going to acknowledge them on the website as well, once we get a picture of them together with their certificate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, because he wanted to go through the whole thing?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we'll do that. And then the next one is the C, which is to discuss a proclamation designating October as National Community Planning Month. Mr. Edwards?
So the American Planning Association endorses this national observance as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community, and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to housing, transportation, and land use challenges. Professional planners and community development staff play a vital role in helping Clarkston navigate this change through data-driven insights, strategic planning, and collaborative decision-making that enhances how residents live, work, and thrive. The full benefits of effective planning are public officials, community leaders, and residents who understand, support, and value thoughtful planning and plan implications. The city of Clarkston is proud to recognize the ongoing efforts of its Planning and Economic Development Department, Planning and Zoning Board, and all of community partners, whose dedication and expertise ensure that Clarkston remains a connected, inclusive, and forward-thinking city. The celebration of National Community Planning Month provides an opportunity to publicly acknowledge the commitment and service of appointed and professional planners who contribute their time, creativity, and skill to improving the city of Clarkston. This was actually a mask, because we could not put it on the agenda until it was acknowledged. But on October 22nd, the city did receive a National Planning Award for advancing diversity and social change in honor of Paul Davidoff for our Clarkston Greenway Plan. Only four communities throughout the entire country get selected every year, and we were lucky enough to be one of those communities, so I wanted to introduce this to you all.
And thank you, Mr. Edwards, for submitting that application, so we appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
On your proclamation, you state that you're going to publicly acknowledge the commitment and service of appointed and professional planners who contribute their time, creativity, and skills. Is there going to be an obligation from the city?
No, not on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is this one we can do consent? Is this a consent one? Consent?
You're just presenting the award?
Yeah, just presenting the award to you all, because it wasn't announced until October 22nd. We could not let anyone know until then.
Okay.
Wait, so this is a ruse, or a...
Unless you all want to give me a certificate.
That's okay, that's okay. So thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right. And then we'll move to a proclamation to, to honor, a proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the Clarkston City, Clarkston Community Center, and that would be City Manager.
Yes, ma'am. So this proclamation, excuse me, proclamation recognizes that the Clarkston Community Center is not just a building, but the heart of social connection and cultural expression in our city, a vibrant hub where the arts, culture, and community come together. They are, of course, celebrating the 100th anniversary of the center, and they will acknowledge that anniversary with a gala that will be happening on November 8th. I did present to council an invitation, so anybody who wants to go that has not already told me that they will be attending, just please go in support of Clarkston Community Center. And so basically, basically, again, this proclamation is just recognizing their 100 years.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
You'd be presenting them with this at the gala?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Is this consent?
I'm okay with consent.
You okay with consent? Councilwoman Bell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, consent across the board, all right. Thank you all. We'll move to 4E, which is the presentation of the Clarkston City Agricultural Plan, and we'll have the city manager to present our presenters for this one.
Yes, ma'am. So we...
And I think we have 10, 10 minutes for it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
10, 15, 10. All right, so we have Ms. Sarah and her team, Foodwell Alliance and Atlanta Regional Commission. They are our every plan partners. Yes, thank you.
Do you have our presentation that we sent? I think that's the actual plan.
Hold on one second, Sarah, sorry. This is the plan itself?
This is it, right?
Yes.
She's sending it. You can go ahead and start, though, if you like.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Emma Huguenay. I'm the Policy and Community Engagement Manager with Foodwell Alliance, and I am here with my colleague and our partner from the Atlanta Regional Commission to present for your consideration the adoption of Clarkston's very own City Agriculture Plan. What is a City Agriculture Plan? It is a set of policy and community program recommendations created to strengthen opportunities to grow and access local food in your community over the course of about three to five years. This work has been done very intentionally over the past year, and we hope that this plan does not stand alone, rather, we have worked to identify ways in which local food can be incorporated into current city plans and projects. This is a community-driven process with Foodwell leading community engagement, ARC leading a formal planning process, and the implementation of this plan is supported by a $75,000 grant. We believe that community-driven and consensus-based plans have greater potential to address all of the intersectional barriers to food access and bring about transformative change. So we think about this plan as both visionary, where everyone had the opportunity to come together and co-create visions and goals for Clarkston's food system, but also practical in that we provide funding and committee leadership to help guide the implementation of high-priority, short-term recommendations that emerge through community feedback. The outcome of this process is the, hopefully, city-approved City Agriculture Plan. We also conducted a community food system assessment to serve as a baseline for the community, and the $75,000 grant, of course, to go towards implementation. But this process also yields community connectedness, engagement with local officials who, you know, feel strongly about food system issues, and a chance to connect and interact with other cities in the region who are developing similar plans and striving towards similar initiatives. In that vein, this program launched in 2019, and since then, four cities have developed city agriculture plans: East Point, Alpharetta, Jonesboro, and Austell. And this work is a part of a growing national trend. There are over 550 active local and regional plans, and 29 states have state-level plans, but unfortunately, Georgia does not. So Clarkston is now the region's fifth city to develop a plan of this nature, and the first city in DeKalb County to do so, which really cements Clarkston's leadership in local food and ag initiatives. Clarkston was selected back in December, and this plan has built on existing work from the Clarkston Food Initiative back in 2018. And Clarkston being a home to a strong network of food and ag organizations really situated you all well to embark on this work to produce a coordinated framework to unify these efforts, guide city action, and continue building on your already resilient food system. As previously mentioned, this took place over the last year. We worked in February to develop our community engagement and outreach methods. Community engagement carried on through April. Our formal planning process was launched with the formation of a steering committee back in May, and that group met monthly through September. Tonight, we are presenting to hopefully target adoption of this plan by the end of the year, and then we will convene our local food and ag committee, which Sarah will elaborate on, and then launch into implementation over the next two years. To talk very briefly about community engagement, we got feedback from over 250 residents. We were able to launch a survey that was translated into seven languages, and all of our findings were made publicly available after our community engagement phase concluded. I'm going to hand it off to Shima Kotogoli with the Regional Commission to talk a little further about our planning process.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for having us tonight. My name is Shima Kotogoli, and I'm from ARC, and I'm the planning lead for the City Agriculture Plan. So our planning process started by shaping a steering committee, including a combination of community representatives and cross-departmental city staff members. So we shaped this, shaped this group to draft the recommendations for the City Agriculture Plan and formulate the priorities that the city is going to pursue for the next steps of the implementation. So this process started in May. We had monthly meetings starting from May, one meeting per month, and five meetings total. The first meeting in May was about an overview of local food system planning and a review of community engagement phase. So we gave the group the feedback we received from the steering committee, and also asked them to verify if it's what they want or not. The second meeting in June was about local food access and grower support. This meeting was an interactive meeting with a visioning activity. This meeting was an interactive, uh, meeting with a visioning activity, so, uh, the group came up, uh, with a draft vision statement for this plan. Uh, the third meeting, uh, we worked on the community feedback and the vision statement to, uh, define the planned priorities for, uh, City Agriculture Plan. Uh, in August, uh, we started prioritizing plan recommendations to understand which ones are short-term or long-term and identified with implementation partners. And finally, in September, we reviewed the draft, uh, plan recommendations, and, uh, had a final discussion with the, uh, steering committee to make sure, uh, these are the right priorities for this plan. Um, so, uh, through this process, uh, we shaped four, uh, main priorities for the plan. Um, priority A is sustainable, uh, policies and practices, uh, for healthy food system. Uh, that's the next slide, actually. Uh, priority B, uh, is cultivating a resourceful community for growers. Uh, priority C, increase access to fresh local food. And finally, priority D, strengthen community outreach and communications. So, um, these four priorities were shaped based on community engagement feedbacks during committee meetings, and, um, all of them, uh, came together as these four main priorities. So, each one of these priorities had a series of recommendations that, uh, right now, I'm going to pass it to Sarah to talk about those recommendations. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Brown. I'm the Senior Manager of Policy and Planning with Foodwell Alliance. Um, I will pick up where Shima left off, talking a bit about our priority areas within the plan. Um, across the four priority areas, we landed on 15 strategic recommendations, and these really capture a breadth of ideas about how to strengthen the local food system within the city. Again, these stem from, um, community feedback, were fine-tuned with the steering committee, and then vetted with potential implementation partner organizations. So, really, this is a roadmap of short-term, which we consider, uh, one-to-two-year projects, and longer-term, which we consider three-to-five-year projects, um, and their inclusion here in a plan does not obligate the city or any suggested partners to enact them. They're really here as part of the broad community vision of working towards an equitable and resilient local food system. Uh, the recommendations that I would like to focus on tonight are those that were high priority for the community and the steering committee, and that are targeted for short-term implementation in the next one to two years. So, within priority A, um, our first key recommendation is to form a local food and agriculture committee. Um, so, we anticipate this will be six to eight individuals made up of community representatives, and hopefully, city representation as well. Um, we would like for them to meet every other month to just coordinate implementation projects over our two-year implementation phase. Uh, second recommendation within this priority area is to launch a food waste reduction program at the Clarkston High School. This was the top priority from our youth focus group. Uh, this will build on a Foodwell Alliance program called Compost Connectors with, as the basis, with support from the IRC New Roots Youth Justice Intern Program. Uh, within that Compost Connectors program, we also like to focus on clusters of schools, so eventually, we would like to expand, um, food waste reduction and composting programs to Freedom Middle School, Indian Creek, and Jollyab Elementary Schools as well. Within priority B, our top recommendation was to launch a home and community gardeners' network to increase connections and share resources. So, this would, um, be comprised of regular in-person events with resource distribution such as seeds and small tools, paired with workshops and networking opportunities. We'd also have a digital space for connection on social media and website, and then physical outpost for hosting the calendar, tool lending, and a seed library potentially at the Clarkston Library. Within priority C, our top two recommendations in the short term were to increase mobile market opportunities in residential and commercial spaces. So, we'd like to build on Fresh Harvest Share the Harvest Program, which currently operates pop-up markets at three apartment complexes weekly. Um, they sell out produce at 50% of market cost, um, and those are very popular, and there's a lot of demand to expand those to other apartment complexes throughout the Clarkston community. We'd also like for those to serve as hubs for community benefit programming with things like health screenings and other educational workshops as well. Uh, also in priority C was to offer educational programming on nutrition, cooking, and preserving foods. So, again, building on existing programming, both at the library and through Share the Harvest, and then eventually tapping into more formal spaces such as professional kitchens at Sun Relief, and the Georgia Piedmont Technical College to expand those cooking classes. Finally, within priority D, um, top recommendations were to increase youth and food, youth food and agriculture programming, excuse me, um, again, building on existing programs such as IRC's New Roots Youth Food Justice Interns at Clarkston High School, and the Friends of Refugees middle school after-school programming. Uh, we'd like to explore partnerships to expand skills in agribusiness, marketing, and integration into other STEAM curriculum. Also in priority D was a recommendation to create a centralized resource sharing plan to disseminate information about food and ag programming and events. We would lean on the local food and agriculture committee to develop a calendar of events and resource library for promotion to the community. So, while some of these recommendations would involve city participation and in-kind support, we've also identified community organizations that we can partner with to build on existing programming and thus make the most of our $75,000 implementation grant. We have held individual meetings with each of these suggested implementation partners to confirm their interest and capacity in participating and implementation over the next one to two years. To talk about the city's role specifically, um, we presented back in January to mayor and council, and at that time, an MOU was approved committing the city to a $75,000 in-kind match for implementation. Um, so, this would be comprised of city staff time, use of city resources such as marketing services, city spaces for meetings and events. Um, it's very easy to get to that $75,000 match over a two-year implementation period. We've already had tremendous, um, commitment from staff throughout our planning process, and we also do not require an exact accounting of this match. It's really a good faith, um, just acknowledgement that the city's going to remain involved through the implementation phase. In terms of next steps, I mentioned as funding, um, Foodwell Alliance is awarding a $75,000 grant for implementation, um, and the city's match will also support programming through the, um, one-to-two-year implementation phase. And our recommendations for key steps include providing city representation on that local food and agriculture committee meeting every other month to ensure that city initiatives are integrated continually into that implementation. Um, our best practice also is to distribute grant funds directly to the community partners that will be implementing these projects. It is able, even partially, to flow through the city budget, but we found for efficiency and flexibility, it's, um, just our best practice to distribute that directly to our community partners. Um, and then Foodwell Alliance will continue to work with the city and the local food and agriculture committee to identify and apply for additional fundraising opportunities to continue this work, um, beyond that $75,000 grant. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much for, um, for having us here tonight and allowing us to present on this planning process. We've really enjoyed working with the Clarkston community over the past year, um, and are so excited to be thinking about implementation of some of these recommendations that, um, really capture the input of hundreds of residents, um, and some of our community partners. And I also wanted to say a specific thank you to the city staff that has served on our project management team, city manager Miller Thornton, Michael Duncan, Richard Edwards, and Jacob Bowie. They have really helped us to steward this process from start to finish, and we're so committed to ensuring the plan was inclusive, innovative, and integrated with other city initiatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you did it in, with 19 seconds to spare with the extra five.
Still counts.
That still counts, okay. We had this as part of a presentation, but I know further down the agenda, we had it for discussion, so, thank you, ladies. Okay. We'll now move, um, to Old Business 5A, which is to discuss an ordinance to add Section 16 dash 16 to the city code to establish a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction program. Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. I'll go to, over some of the adjustments that were made to this based on your recommendations. Uh, so, you'll see Section 16 dash 16AA. We updated that to read, "All such requests shall be submitted to the Planning and Economic Development Director for review by the Planning and Economic Development Director, city engineer, and city manager." You said you would like to see all levels of, uh, the management involved in these, just so it's not a one person making sole decisions on this, so we did include that. Uh, and then we'll drop down to C. Uh, staff added this as a new section that reads, "If any of the circumstances set forth in Section 16 dash 16B exist on the property, the city manager or their authorized designee shall approve the request in writing prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy." Uh, that was in response to questions of whether or not it would be granted if these conditions were met. This would codify that if one of them are met, we have to issue, um, uh, the permit for that. Uh, and then D, we've got, "The fee in lieu of sidewalk construction shall be $8 per square foot over a hard sidewalk. The fee shall automatically increase on January 1 of each calendar year by 2%, with the first increase beginning on January 1, 2027." Um, and I spoke with our city engineer and did some research on what regionally, uh, Metro Atlanta is going for the cost of sidewalk construction per foot, and this is what we came upon as a good average. Um, and then we've added G. Um, "The funds collected from the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction shall be separately accounted for and may only be used to install new sidewalks, new pedestrian facilities, or to repair existing sidewalk or pedestrian facilities, including but not limited to the following." I, sidewalks or trails that fill a gap between two existing sidewalks or trail segments; two, ADA-compliant curb ramps; three, pedestrian crosswalk pavement markings; and four, pedestrian warning signs or signals. And that was just in response to making sure it was clear where the money could and could not go, once collected. Uh, then we've also added Section H. Payments collected through fees in lieu of sidewalk construction shall be used by the city within two years of collection unless the said funds are insufficient to cover the cost of any pedestrian improvements identified within an approved project. Uh, and that was just a timeline, so the city's just not setting on money. Um, and we did decide on two years because in the past year, I think we've only saw three of these cases come up, so it was a way to also make sure that we can build money for certain projects as well.
Okay.
And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and council. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so, Mr. Edwards, on the list, um, I know he said, uh, let's see, but not limited to, um, so G, the list of four different things under Section G. Um, would we want to expand pedestrian crosswalk pavement markings to just any kind of pedestrian crossing or associated markings, or, um, I don't know if there's a reason we specifically listed these instead of, is it just examples for people, or?
Uh, yeah, so those are just specific examples. Uh, if it's some type of pavement marking or something like that, I think with the city manager's purview, we, we could proceed with the project similar to that. Or if it's warning signs or signals, we could also include something like that.
Okay, and thinking specifically, and I forget, now there's a technical term for it, the crossing over North Indian Creek that has, that actually has some curbs, and, um, it's a little, little fancier than just crosswalks. I just want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves on, in being able to do something like that.
I would think included in that would be any curb and gutter that would come with the installation of a sidewalk would be included in that.
Okay, perfect, as long as you don't have any concerns, I don't either.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the council?
I just want to know, Richard, is the 2% increase that will happen annually, is that standard that you saw across other programs, and is that to offset, uh, any additional costs of processing that you think may, we made appear?
Uh, yeah, so I saw a couple of different cities, they did anywhere from 2 to 10%. Um, understanding that this council wanted something that was reasonable for people to put money into, we went the lower range on that. Um, and I think this would also keep us in check in case we don't review this again for a couple of years, there's at least an increase that's built in. At any time, we can reexamine this, and I can work with the city engineer. If prices were to skyrocket next year, we could work with him to get a text amendment to make sure it's more in line with today's current, uh, cost per installation.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, this is a financial question to the city manager. Would we have a separate fund for this?
Please, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? Hearing none. Um, do we have any comments from the public on this one? Any comments from the public? Any comments from, come up and, and say something, and give your name, where you are.
Do you have any comments?
It's, it has to be about this agenda item?
No, we don't have any about this agenda.
Okay.
Because when you ask for public comments, you can say, "Does anybody want to speak?" and you run right into four. So, you wait.
Okay, which one did you want to speak on?
So, I can, I only can do public comment if it's on the agenda.
Yes.
No.
Okay. And if you want to, um, next Thursday, at the beginning, you can have that time to-
Okay.
Okay, thank you. No problem with no other, uh, comments?
Can I have a, just a point of order?
Sure.
Question on that? With, do we need to do anything, because I've noticed that, that a number of people have had some confusion on that. I'm wondering if we should change our description of public comment for work sessions to clarify, you know, the open public comment at, at meetings. I don't know if that would be, it's a little bit off the agenda, but-
We can say work session comments. Well-
Well, just to clarify that during work sessions, it's specifically, it, it doesn't, it's the same, I think, for work sessions and for council meetings. And so, I think what people are getting concerned, confused with is, when does that actually happen? And so, I think just tweaking the language to clarify for work sessions specifically, has to be tied to an agenda item, it's going to happen with the agenda item. For council meetings, you know, you can come in and talk about whatever you want within reason.
But it has it in the first section of the public comment section, but if we need to change the wording in terms of the title of it, then that probably will simplify it as well.
Excuse me, mayor, but I-
Yes.
I, I think the issue is that the public comments stated for the work session are the public comments that are put in for city council meeting. So, somehow, this does not reflect that they can make comments after the city council discusses something, which is what it used to say. So, if you will read that, you'll see that it, it doesn't say when they can do those comments.
So, we could just, I don't want to get too in the weeds of this, because we talking about a topic, um, but we'll make sure in terms in the future how we word this part. Okay. With no other public comments, is this something we can have for consent, or do we need to have this as an agenda item? Consent, 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 consent. Councilman Carroll?
I have a point of consent.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll move to the next one, which is to discuss new business, and that is 6A, and that's to discuss and review for adoption the Clarkston City Agricultural Plan, and Mr., uh, city manager?
I have a thought.
To Mr. Edwards, okay. All right, Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. I don't think there's any more that I added our wonderful consultants haven't already said.
Okay.
But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have from the administrative side of this plan.
You have a question? Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, I'd hate to go back to the previous discussion, but because there seems to be a miscommunication about who gets to comment when at work session, and that typically at work session, we allow citizens to comment after we've discussed an item. I think, uh, it would be a good idea if we continued to do that and allow our citizens who've come to work session to make comments on something after the council has discussed it, which is our typical approach.
They can, but the issue is it has to be an agenda item. So, if it's not an agenda item, then they have to wait until council, council meeting.
But is this not an agenda item?
It is. So, so, so just for clarity's sake, we had under the presentation section, the actual agricultural presentation.
Right.
Now, at this time, we have it on a next agenda item where we can have the opportunity to discuss as a council, followed by allowing the public, if they want to have additional conversation on this particular item.
Right. Was, all right, and we will be doing that?
We're doing it right now.
All right.
Is it, is it a-
No, we, was, was, was the item about, um, in lieu of fees, not an agenda item, and did the public get an opportunity to comment on that?
I thought, there was no one who wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, nobody wanted to comment.
She does not have a question about this.
Okay, so, we're good. All right, we're going to move on.
I have a point of clarity for the ag plan.
Yes.
Mayor, if that's okay?
Yes.
Um, will the, um, ag plan committee be responsible for engaging those community partners that are named in the plan?
Uh, yes. Um, so, right now, we're in the process of getting community members to make that board, um, and- And we've discussed with the consultant that we'd want to bring that before city council to make sure everyone's voice is heard in establishing that committee.
Okay. Well, those community partners that are in the plan, like the community center or the high school, the committee will be responsible for engaging with them, along with the city?
Along with the city staff member who manages the board, yes.
Okay, thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Johnson?
What is the obligation of the city, other than land designation for these gardens?
So there, oh, I know that there will be a member, a city representation on the committee, right?
Yes, and we'll be talking through that. This may be a good opportunity for our new economic mobility officer coming in, or it may stay with the director, me, to help implement this. And then there's the 75,000 in-kind match, and that just comes in staff time, lending resources like office and meeting space and things like that. There's no physical money being exchanged for that.
Thank you.
Are we limited to those partners, or can we have additional partners? I know those were recommendations.
My understanding is that I will defer to that the consultant is, at any time we can expand those partners, those are just the ones they, that they have spoken with and have agreed to come on to be those, those project sponsors at this time.
Just to expand on that, you look at the actual plan document, there are several other suggested partners listed than the ones that we highlighted in the presentation. So we've spoken with many other community organizations, and this plan is meant to be a living document, and we're absolutely happy to bring on additional partners as the work continues.
Any questions? By, Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, my only question is the evaluation of some of the programs and the implementation that you mentioned here around some of the educational opportunities. Would that be shared back with the city to inform how we do work after the conclusion of this project in 2027?
Yes, great question. My colleague, Emma Pugnai, who presented with me is an expert in qualitative data analysis, and we are working on an implementation plan that is specific to the Clarkston Agriculture Plan, but we're also working on a regional evaluation of all five city agriculture plans within the Metro Atlanta region, so that we can start to accumulate regional data and really start to tell a story about the impact of these programs. But yes, that will absolutely be shared back with the city and the community as well.
Thank you. So then on our, the, kind of jumping off of the evaluation thing, so for the selection of partners, do you have a list of criteria that y'all looked at for those? And it may just, it didn't have to be detailed. I'm thinking through the sort of future, like if we evaluate performance on existing partners and say, okay, maybe that wasn't a good fit, or if we bring in new people.
Yeah, you know, our process wasn't rigorous in that sense that we had a list of criteria for partners. It was more of, within our community engagement process, we spoke to so many community residents and got a sense of who was doing this work on the ground and the programs that we could build on that were ongoing, and really leveraged the grant dollars to the best of our ability. So we did not have specific criteria for those partners, just the ones that we knew were active and that were participating in the process. But again, it's very open to additional partnership.
Okay, great, thanks.
Did you also look at DeKalb County's Embrace Program as an option in terms of the teens? I know that was something that former commissioner, now madam CEO, had as an program that she was doing for teens.
The Embrace or the Embark?
The Embark, yeah.
Yes, we're familiar with that program. We would love to bring on more county partnership as the implementation phase gets underway. And yes, Food Alliance works closely with that farm.
Okay, all right. Any other comments?
I have one for Richard. So my question is, in priority area A, doesn't talk about a revaluation of city zoning ordinances to expand market opportunities? Do y'all know the timeline on that piece? And then, Richard, what's your plan for rolling that out for expanding of those market opportunity areas?
Yeah, so I think on my side, we're going to get the committee put together, and then at that time, I can start feeding off some of the ideas that we're hearing from that, on top of the feedback we've already heard, based on recommendations from Sarah and her team, because they already have a list of recommendations prepared. So as soon as the time comes, I'm ready to start working on that. A couple of other text amendments that I'm working on right now to try to hopefully get through very soon. So it will be on the agenda for probably first or second quarter of next year to start looking at that. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, any other questions? So for the mobility, the farm piece, in terms of the food mobility piece, are we going to still do both where we have it at going to apartments and then utilizing city property to do those types of activities?
I mean, I guess we could speak with our committee and see how they want to go. If you want to provide input on that, we could start doing some more of our stuff in apartment complexes. If one of our community partners has a gap, that's definitely something we can look at to use our funds, but, you know, do you have any more to add on that?
Is, I'm sorry, is your question specifically about the mobile market recommending?
Well, just to make sure, because that if we did that, we also look at having like a standard farmer's market that maybe not is moved around from apartment complex to apartment complex, but have something that if we did it every week or every other week.
Oh, yes, yeah. Establishing a permanent farmer's market is actually a recommendation within the plan as well. I just didn't highlight it because it's not considered a short-term recommendation. As we know, it'll take a while to get off the ground, but we know that's been highlighted this year, and we hope to get traction around that and support that activity as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. And community, do, do we have any rest? Yes, yes.
Another thing on a lot of these recommendations, Sarah and her team have met with Perez, who is doing our Arch and Rec Master Plan, so there is some dialogue between the two there to help further these other plans as well.
Okay, perfect.
And the Greenway Trail, too.
And the Greenway Trail, yes.
Yes, thank you. And at this time, do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? Hearing no comments from the public. Is this something that we, in terms of the adoption of this, that we can move this as in consent, or do you want to have this as an agenda item? Consent, 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 consent. Going once, going twice. You've made it consent.
Sorry, consent. Consent is fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And just, just to kind of touch base, during the agenda management implementation, the council meeting, public comments language was invertedly added to the work session agenda. We will make sure going forward that the correct language will be on all the agendas going forward. Move next to item 6B, which is to discuss an alcohol license application for delivery services. And thank you, ladies, for coming, and we always appreciate your hard work. We'll move to discussing alcohol license application for delivery services at GB License LLC, DBA, Go Puff, located at 808 Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia, And that would be Clerk Mitchell.
Yes, the Alcohol Review Committee received this renewal alcohol license application. This is simply a change of manager. Initially, when this item, well, when the application was approved, there is a, excuse me, there was an old manager there, being that there's a new manager, we had to do the same as a new application, which caused us to do a background check. With the background check, we did reveal that there was a reckless driving charge back in 2020, which was also disclosed by the manager on the application. So this item is coming before council for discussion and approval. The applicant is on Zoom for questions.
Okay. An applicant's name?
David Onowski.
David Onowski.
Onaskew.
Oh, sorry.
Onaskew, okay. All right. Council, did you have any questions as it relates to this item? No questions? Okay, public, do you have any questions or comments for this particular item? Okay, hearing none. Is this something that will go on consent? Or consent? Yes, no? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, so this won't be consent. This will be a regular agenda item. Okay, all right, thank you. And we'll move to the next agenda item, which is to discuss the official acceptance by the City of Clarkston, so resignation of John Gany from the Downtown Development Authority. And that is Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. On October 17th, Director John Gany did submit his resignation from the DDA stating that his business is getting busier, and he's had some life things come up, so he is requesting that he be taken off the board. And the DDA bylaws do require that city council accept the resignation. So if you all were to accept this resignation, we would plan to have a board opening on the city's website within the next day or two after that acceptance.
Okay, thank you. And I know we appreciate all of his time and effort. He has really blossomed with that position, and it's just sad to see him have to go, but I want to make sure we recognize and acknowledge the time that he was on there as well.
And he was always the first to volunteer for a gift card for a giveaway or something, so he will be dearly missed from the DDA.
Absolutely. So with that, any comments? Are you willing to accept the resignation?
So we don't have to accept it, right?
He can go on business vacation for a little while till he gets it together. Any, are we all okay with accepting it? Do we have any comments from the public about this one? Hearing none, then can this be on consent agenda? Consent, 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 consent.
Yeah, consent.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is item 6D, to discuss city council appointment of Attorney Tunde Akin Yaley to the position of Ethics Hearing Officer, and that's city
Yes, ma'am. The administration was made aware that the most previous serving Ethics Hearing Officer is no, no longer has the capacity to serve. I believe he passed away. He did, yes. And so we are needing to appoint another Ethics Hearing Officer. Mr. Attorney Tunde actually meets the criteria as established by the city's ethics ordinance, and so we recommend appointment of him for the Ethics Hearing Officer position.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions from the council?
One more point, Mayor. We will, there will be a contract, some form of contract service agreement. We do anticipate that the service agreement will be less than the $25,000 authority of the city manager, so we do not expect the contract to come back before council.
Okay. Yeah, a question, Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, I don't know who the director's to, but is Attorney Tunde, is he, is he still serving as the court judge for the City of Latonia? Would this cause any conflict?
I don't specifically know whether he is serving in that exact capacity. Presently, I do know that Tunde has experience as what we call, that's an actual judicial capacity as well as quasi-judicial, which is like a hearing officer such as this. So in my opinion, I think there is no conflict or problem, and that it's a good thing that he has that experience.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, hearing none. Is this something for consent? Consent? Consent, consent? Okay, all right. Councilman Carroll?
Consent.
All right, thank you. And we'll move to the next item, which is to discuss a resolution authorizing an emergency contract for the Forty Oaks structure encapsulation project to be funded through SLOSS II. Mr. Seaton?
Good evening, everyone. As you know, with the Forty Oaks structure, it's had significant damage over the years. And I know that's been something that the council and you, the mayor, have been pushing to get done. And since we haven't really decided long-term what we're going to do, me and Mr. Kazin met with some contractors, we met with two, actually. It's significant structural damage to the kitchen, along with the roof. And also, we're dealing with asbestos that's on both sides of the house, the west wing and as long as the east wing. So we met with the contractors that's going to use tarp, Inspire retired, it's waterproof, UV resistant, and it's also recommended by FEMA. And we met with the two contractors, the first being Griffin Contractors, the second being J M Lee Construction. We got two bids. The first bid was $36,000, the second bid was $26,000. So the staff recommends that we go with J M Lee Construction. Also, we want to make sure that we get this on the consent for the next council meeting, but also we want to make sure that it's contingent that we do $30,000, just in case for any unexpected occurrences that may come that may be just a couple of dollars over $26,000 to cover it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Johnson?
I'm sorry, thank you. This message, this is for Larry. We've been here before with Forty Oaks, and we were going to demo, and we gave them an opportunity to get some things in order before we paid another dollar. So to be here today and not have that breakdown of what they, I think they were raising money, or what they wanted to see with Forty Oaks, I am trying to see, am I missing something here? Or do you, do you have a plan from them?
No, we have nothing from the Citizens Committee. This was, this is to safe up what we have now. We don't, I'm not aware of a schedule or, or anything of that nature from the historical committee. I have not heard anything. I don't, city manager, I don't think you've heard anything? So this is, we're going to distort what's in there. So if you look at this building, there's about one-third of it needs saving. One-third that's good has to be protected because of the conditioning of the other two-thirds of the building. So we decided to cover up the entire structure, just to be on the safe side. And this is the roof only, as well as the porch. How do I say this? So there's a lot I can say about the building itself. I'm going to go through, I mean, I think council knows my thought about this, but if you want to save the one-third, you have to encapsulate it. And, and we have to, we had to develop some very detailed specifications, because there's asbestos on some of the siding and not only those siding. There's some asbestos in other areas that we have to avoid, and the bid spec did that. So we put out the bid at no bidders. Didn't have to put out the bid, because it's under $250,000 worth of work, a lot less, but we decided to put out the bid, and we got zero. So then we went to the LSBE Certified Vendors List from DeKalb County and found five contractors that were capable of doing this, made phone calls, all five. Two out of the five submitted quotes, one for $36,750 and one for $26,000. Both qualified, good references, and so if, if there's even an inkling that there's going to be something that we're going to save on that building, we have to do this. The materials that we're using, I specify very distinctly, this is not the blue vinyl tarp you see. This is, this is long-term FEMA-approved materials. We did some research on it. Unfamiliar, in my experience, so I had to do some research. So what we're doing is really going to shore this up. We're not going to affect the, we're not going to touch the asbestos siding that's out there. The contractors are going to do a good job. And, and so my thought is that for $26,000, plus $4,000 for unknowns, $30,000, it's worth the money, because we may find that there is some grant monies out there somewhere. I'm not familiar with it, but maybe there is. Let's give the committee a little more time to research that, and let us do this to that bill.
Well, the demo was $30,000.
Yeah, it was.
I'm just saying, this is, so why would we, I'm, I'm.
Because you're trying to salvage the building.
I need, they don't know what they're going to do with the building.
Okay. Okay, but, okay, and Councilwoman Bell?
No, I agree, wholeheartedly.
Can I ask one more question? This is for the Parks Director. Is this building in your master plan salvaging it or using the land? I'm just, or you haven't gotten that far?
No, the building is under the master plan, and speaking with Perez Group yesterday, they are looking for some grant funding as well for this bill, but it is under the Park Master Plan.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell, and then Councilman Perkins.
I mean, we talked about this agnostically, to have a plan for this. We even had a demolition contract there waiting on us, and we gave them more time. I think that maybe we need to do our due diligence and ask them, do they have a plan? Or we need to wait for the grant funding that's coming through that you talked to Mr. Perez about.
So all the time a decision is made, so here's my thought process. Mr. Duncan's going to do his thing, right, with Perez's grant. The Historical Committee made their thing. Because this is such an unknown situation, I think the arrow on the safe side is to go ahead and do this. And that's just my recommendation.
Councilman Perkins?
But I think to the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Bell's point, I mean, this is the whole thing that we went through last year where our request was, show us the plan, interest plans, like, oh, there's funding out there, there's funding out there, so here we are again, putting more money into it with no plan. I mean, we were seeing funding cuts from the grant sources all, all across the board. I've been on multiple calls this week trying to figure out what we're going to do about SNAP benefits, and so, I mean, people are, we're cutting food. I guess I'm just trying to say, like, it, it still feels too ambiguous to me to be putting money towards a house that's honestly not, I haven't gotten any feedback beyond a very small, important group of our community saying we want to save the house. What I'm hearing from a lot of people is they can't make rent, you know, can't afford my groceries. So that's, that's where I'm struggling to, I guess, reconcile this in my mind when we said, come, again, to Councilwoman Bell's point, to Vice Mayor's point, come to us with a plan, come to us with a clear outline of funding sources, and it's still hypothetical over a year later. So that's.
It's November last year.
Yeah.
Counsel, thank you. Councilman Perkins, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes. Well, we can continue to let this house deteriorate until this is no longer an issue, and that's what's happened so far. And that committee has put in a lot of work. I'm not sure why they're not here. I'm not sure why we haven't heard or been asked to hear from the Historic Preservation Committee, but the agreement was that they would move forward, and they are moving forward with getting partnerships and getting money to establish whether this can be on the Historic Preservation List or not. And all we have before us is $30,000 to stop the deterioration of this house, which we should have done years ago, and that we have been asking to have done years ago. So if you want to not fund this, then just bring in the damn bulldozers, because that's going to be what happens. And we have been on this discussion many, many times, and I, I'm just tired of hearing people who want to go back and re-discuss something that we had approval to move forward with. Pardon my French.
That's not French.
That was not, I don't think I need translation for that, so we're good.
Cut her mic off.
So that's okay, thank you. This is something that's been very passionate for, for a long time, since we actually transitioned it back to us. So thank you for providing this information. I think, because one of the biggest, biggest issues is that we haven't taken the gutters off, and that was one of the big things, is I'm looking at the gutters dangling off from the photos, because that was something that was pulling that the awnings and other pieces down. So any other comments from the council?
I have a question.
Yes. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I speak briefly?
Yes.
I, I would agree with Vice Mayor Bell, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Johnson and Councilman Perkins, and I'm not inclined to spend more money on this, just because I haven't seen a plan. It's been a year. The grant environment is, I think Councilman Perkins said, is substantially worse than it was a year ago. So in my mind, it's throwing good money after bad to keep spending money on maintaining this building when we don't, we don't have even a plan a year later to, you know, ever renovate it or get a grant for it. So I would not be inclined to approve this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have one.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
My question, are these bids time-sensitive?
I think if you made a decision, so cost materials continue to go up. I think that if council was able to make a decision one way or the other within 30 days, I think we're okay.
I just want them to have the opportunity to come next week and, and let us know what they're doing. So this is not a consent item, so I just think that would be fair.
Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, we got a public, we got a public. All right. And state your name.
Michelle Musurjin, 3756 Poplar Drive, my property abuts, Forty Oaks. And I agree with Perkins and YT and Jamie. I think these folks have been given a year, and having even, I think it was Georgia Tech came in and did a whole evaluation of the building. There didn't seem to be anything really redeemable about it. If they haven't done anything in over a year, I would say they, they lost their opportunity. Grant funding, I agree with Mark. That's like a wish, you don't know, you don't know. So I, I would say, I'll get that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, I know this is not consent, so we'll have it as a regular agenda item. Thank you all for that. We'll move to the next item, which is 6F, and that's to discuss a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Site Engineering, Inc., the most responsive and responsible bidder for temporary repairs to the Norman Dam, Norman Road Dam downstream embankment slope in the amount of $65,000 to be funded through Splatz II. Mr. Kaiser, my favorite subject.
Yes, ma'am. Three bidders, all qualified. References are good for all of them. My estimate before the work began was $75,000. We had two above $90 and one at $65,000. Site Engineering, they do a lot of work in DeKalb County on similar kind of work. Recommendation is to utilize that firm to perform the temporary repairs, and they are temporary. There's a lot that can be done on that dam, but we're not going to spend that kind of money. The real work was probably for repairs should be, must probably close to $400,000 to $500,000. But this will shore it up. It will protect it for the next two years until we blow it up or rehabilitate it, or whatever decision is going to be once the design work begins. But it's, it's something that needs to be done. If you notice, as I have for the past couple of years, the upstream slope, the fence, is moving inward. The roadway is beginning to show some, what's called differential settlement. It's safe, I'm not worried about failing, but, you know, if we have two or three or four of the overtopping events, that might be a problem. And so, you know, we are, we're going to present next month the recommendations for the firm to do design work, and so that will be on your agenda for conversation, and then we'll get them moving in January. So we're going to move on very rapidly with that. But this is for temporary repairs only, and, and so we have a very definitive timeframe of 90 days, but actually, we have already met with Site Engineering on-site because the price was lower than mine, and I wanted to be sure they fully understood the scope of work, there was no ambiguity, and there weren't, there was none. And, and so they're ready to begin work, and they want to actually begin work right away and complete within 30 days. So they're ready to do the work.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Are there any questions about this item? Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Kaiser, you said that this will kind of shore it up for two years. I know we have a long-term, you know, RFP out right now for more of a complete solution to it. Again, given city budget and everything else in the next two years, will this work beyond that? Is it kind of like, hey, two years for sure, but we could stretch it? Or is this just, we're putting a Band-Aid on a?
Every quarter, I look at this bridge and provide a report for a GMA risk purposes.
Yeah.
I've been doing it for a couple of years, actually, so there's a documentation of where we are, from year ago to present. So the question is, will this suffice for the next two years? Who the heck knows?
Gotcha.
I don't know. We could have another pretty significant storm event, and that fence could fall into the water. I don't know. But, so the dam, because it was built in 1921, the upstream and downstream slope of banks, without getting into detail, need to be at least two-to-one, if not three-to-one slope, like this. Slope of the dams are almost one-to-one slope. And, and over the years, Public Works has, for many years, actually, not just recently, has placed stone and grout on the downstream slope as temporary repairs. I mean, you could have those materials slough away during a rainfall event, like what happened here, and you could do another repair work next month, next year, I don't know. But what I, what we're doing now is going to take care of the existing problem, which is pretty significant. I mean, I asked Marcus to cover that with blue vinyl here a couple of months ago because I did not want rain deteriorating that downstream slope any more than it already is. And so he did that, and so it shored it up, but this has to, this will take care of that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had a question as far as like the materials that we're going to use for that. What are we using?
It's a GeoWeb textile material. It's hexagonal circular material. Basically, the first thing you do is, there's a lot of loose soil. So they're going to use a small piece of equipment on the downstream, the creek side, they're going to get a little small excavator in there, they're going to remove all the loose material on the slope without penetrating in the dam, I'm going to do that, and then they'll bring in some extra dirt, dump it on the roadway, spread it out very carefully on the slope as best they can, then they'll put a GeoGrid material about this thick with, basically void spaces, and you backfill that with soil, and then you put a vegetative cover on top of that so vegetation grows. So it's a plastic material that will, that's used for that purpose of a one-to-one slope. Basically, it's tacked into the side of the dam, nailed in, if you want to call it that.
Okay, thank you. And we are still partnering, trying to work with DeKalb?
Yeah, so we will do more of that, on this one, no. We'll do more of that when we begin the design work, because they will be brought in early on, on the permitting side and the dam design.
Okay.
As well as citizens, and this is, this is a citizen involvement as well out there, the Carson Lakes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Any questions from the public? Oh, Councilwoman Hood, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have a comment. Mr. Kaiser, thank you for keeping an eye on this. It looks bad, and, you know, it could be a hazard if you had not presented this to us, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Public comments? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the body? Is this consent, or you want to consent? Okay.
I don't want to give it more time. I mean, you want to.
I don't.
I'm seeing that thing slip every time I drive over.
I know, and, and we're in hurricane season now. That's what, that's why I'm really concerned.
You got to be prayed out to go with that.
Right? Consent? Yes, no?
Consent.
Okay, consent. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. We'll move on to the next item, which is to the 6G, and that's to discuss a resolution to declare a police weapon as surplus property for the City of Clarkston Assistant Chief Todd.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Police Department is requesting a following weapon valued at $425.29 to be designated as a surplus equipment. Glock, Makis Glock, model G43XMOXAB, serial number CEGV790.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, any questions from the public? All right, is this consent? 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 Councilman Carroll?
Consent.
All right, thank you. Okay, I love the delayed reaction there. So we'll move to 6H, which is to discuss and approve the 2026 holiday schedule for the City of Clarkston. Dr. Baker?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is to discuss and approve the 2026 holiday calendar for the City of Clarkston.
Okay. All right, is there any questions about that? The birthday is not on here, I'm sorry.
Not consent, you're not getting consent now.
Can't get consent? Okay, can you go over those dates?
Sure. January 1st, 2026, New Year's Day. January 19th, 2026, Dr. Martin Luther King's Day. February 16th, 2026, President's Day. April 3rd, 2026, Spring Day. May 25th, 2026, Memorial Day. June 19th, 2026, June National, Juneteenth, excuse me, National Independence Day. July 4th, Independence Day. September 7th, Labor Day. October 12th, Indigenous Day. November 11th, Veterans Day. November 26th, Thanksgiving Day. November 27th, the day after Thanksgiving. December 4th, 24th, Christmas Eve, and December 25th, Christmas Day.
Okay. And then you guys get half off on Election Day, right?
Yes. Well.
Is it presidential?
Perhaps that needs to be considered for this election coming up.
Well, you get half a day on Election Day.
Perhaps we can consider that.
February 16th is President's Day, not our President's Birthday. It says President's Birthday.
My apologies on that, that's a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Noted. Thank you so much.
So just, we'll double check whether it was specifically for President's Day for the election.
And then October 112.
Yeah, I think that's what we did.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, well, we did it. I thought it was for every election, because that was the whole point.
Yeah, I did too, because we were closed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every year is an Election Day. I mean, there's an election.
So we, we, the thing about the whole thing was more symbolic than anything else, to ensure not only that, you know, even though they have all these dates, but it's also to make sure that we let the, the body also know, the community, this is Election Day. And so unfortunately, other than Ms. Mitchell, when it comes to dealing with the elections, you know, that was kind of like half a day. Okay?
So we're, we're saying we want to add that to the?
Can we, is, is that fine with the body?
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Cool? Okay, so, half a day?
Half a day for Election Day? Is that retroactive for 2025 as well?
Yes, 20, yeah.
Are we doing it?
Well, we, we, we already doing it, we're doing it, since we're talking about 2026, we're doing it with 2026.
Yeah, half day, got it.
They're trying to get that.
That ship is out.
I thought, like, when I tried to do it.
Hey, trying to get a full day out of that?
Trying to get a full day out of that, okay. All right, but we, we, we got you. So, thank you, other than Clerk Mitchell, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Thank you, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, can you repeat that, please?
Which one are we repeating?
Are we?
A half a day?
A half a day.
Half a day on Election Day.
All right.
Because, especially because it's a gubernatorial year.
Okay. And we are not changing February 16th.
We're changing it for President's Day.
Thank you.
Not the birthday, okay? All right, we good? Okay? Okay. All right, public comment?
The only thing I want to say, and I, I just really want your consideration on this, can we take Independence Day off of here and make that a floating holiday? Can we take Independence Day off of here and make that a floating holiday? I mean, make that one of the ones. Because, let me tell you what happens.
Well, that, so, I think for the good of the order, since the barbecue and everything's already set up and the flags and everything, we're going to keep it going, okay? We'll keep it going. But thanks for the consideration. I've seen the faces, I want to know. Okay, so, can we do that as consent? Consent with the addition? Consent?
With a change?
Consent? Yes, okay. Councilman Carroll, consent?
Consent.
All right, thank you all. And so, with that, we'll go ahead, and I'll take a motion to adjourn, but also remind people, it's only been 26,000 people in DeKalb County to vote. It's 508 registered voters in DeKalb County. So, just remind, we're not going to have council meeting on Tuesday of next week. We moved it to Thursday because it is Election Day. So, I want to make sure to remind people that part about it being moved to Thursday. And also, you have till Friday to early vote, and Election Day is November 4th. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, thank you.